Good evening, this is the Rutland Town Planning Commission. It's April twentieth of two thousand and twenty-three. Welcome everyone and let's please start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. Of which our origin stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. So approval of the agenda. Have an order of things to do.
Do I move the agenda?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, no public comment tonight? No new business, right Bill unless anything else has come across that transom? And so we'll move down to old business and um we wanted to make sure that um everyone had a copy of the latest draft. Have there been any changes Bill since the la- our last meeting?
I don't think so.
Okay. So we're um definitely on for May eleventh. Uh, we're. The word has gotten out there and is getting out there. Uh, we've. There was a uh story in the Rutland Herald. Um, it's on the town's website, Facebook page, Front Pudge Forum. Channel three C X wants to do a story and they've set up an interview interviews uh in early May. So, yeah, I think people know it's out there. We'll 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 keep putting the word out as we go forward. One thing that I think might be helpful. As definitely during the meeting and probably prior to to also release is, you know, one of our communications. Is um a frequently asked questions, a list. And so I wanted to like kind of play that F A Q game tonight with everyone. There've been a number of comments on our Facebook page that could um that that probably belong in a in an F A Q. And anything else that you have heard or from reading the the draft? Anything that you think should be part of this? So this is, this is, it'll be probably a couple pages of. Answering some of the questions you already have and 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 others that we think people um may have during the hearing. Or may want to know prior to it. So you know, one of them is. You know, what what is the legal, you know, rationale for something this, you know, where where do we get the the legal status? Um, and and there's been a number of others. So I thought just go down the list I have. Let's add anything else that occurs to you folks. And we'll put together this this F A Q. And um put it on the website that there's still room if if the the guy you know um can help us. And and we'll put it other places. So um I'll just go in order as they've come through in the Facebook post. Uh, you know, uh, one of the first ones was, why are we doing this? We aren't Killington. So um so so as we go down this list, you know, should this be one of the frequently asked questions? There's questions and there's answers. A question, answer, question. So it just, you know, it's a couple pages of that.
My only co-comment on the the question that was asked is why are we doing this? We're not Killington. What town we are is irrelevant. The answer, you ask the question, why are we doing this? We answer the question. Uh, I'm just thinking that a a question like that is somewhat confrontational and combative and I would drop anything out of a question that we feel is. Either politically or or emotionally charged or motivated because those are irrelevant. And it's just to, I don't know, stir up. Um, controversy. I'd like to avoid that.
Right. So so maybe we can, maybe we can rephrase that question. Um, you know, isn't, isn't an ordinance like this? You know, typically for uh resort towns or some or something like that. Because I think there is some value in explaining why this ordinance. Is is good for just a regular old town like Rutland Town. I think this is an opportunity for us to make that that point.
Well, the example is, we we have, we know of a number of uh dwellings within the town that are. Rentable via Airbnb. You know that it's happening here and we want to do something about it before it becomes an issue.
And it and it's maybe even more of an issue because we're not. Uh, of a seasonal town of of rent of, you know, condominiums. We're a town of neighborhoods.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? Something like that?
I mean, that that's a response to the the question, I guess, rather than the question, but.
Yeah. To make sure that it's done right to protect all the neighbors and people in town. I mean.
We, well. Have a, uh, one of the things here, the purpose, some of those answers may be here in the.
In the purpose, yeah, I would agree with it. And I I think that, I I don't know, did everybody get a copy of this? I just tried to. Read through this and this basically asks some very good questions.
Yeah, we'll get to that. We'll get to that.
Yeah, but I'm saying uh. Very simply that the approach taken here is is something that outlines a lot of the uh interests that people have been asking. So. Um, that can serve as um.
I think uh one of the things, I've been trying to look at this thing from the average taxpayer's viewpoint. Um, and being in town government for a few years, I. I learned that uh when things are going relatively smooth and well in town and financially sound. The taxpayers have a tendency not to pay too much attention to what's going on. And I think once this. Ordinance gets um. Well, point where it's made public, public document. Um, we're gonna have some questions as to, the first thing that came to mind is why does it have to be as many pages as it is? And I'm sure there's explanations for that because it's all written in here.
Yeah.
But these are the kinds of things that taxpayers are gonna ask. Ask us.
Right, right. Okay.
And I think we need to be prepared.
Yeah, and and that's part of this this exercise too, is kind of preparing us for. For the questions we have received and ones that maybe we think we're, we might get during the meeting. So so maybe an, oh, hi Andy.
Hi, everybody. Sorry, I couldn't get in on time. My computers down here are just running super slow tonight. It took me about eight minutes to get on, to to get open.
Well, glad you joined us. Um. What we're doing right now, Andy, is we're kind of prepping for the May eleventh public hearing. On the short-term rentals and um we're preparing a frequently asked questions.
Yeah, I gathered that watching from what was going on. I've been on for a couple of minutes already.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I just noticed you, sorry. Um, so, okay, so um we're not Killington. Um, wouldn't it? Uh, a a next question. That we answer um be that, well, we, Rutland Town doesn't have zoning. So how does this fit into our town government? What would be our? Oh, you you know, we're we're bound to have some questions from folks just a minute, Andy. Yeah, see you. Um, that, you know, this smacks of zoning, right? So what, so what is our answer gonna be? Andy?
Oh, I I am, I'm sorry if I missed anything in the beginning, uh, and if I do, I apologize, but. I think our our main thrust should be strictly the safety issue. And that's where we should stand on the thing, the the inspection and this and the safety part. And. The rest of it is is um just come up with, you know, as generic and answer as as we can. But again, I just, the safety issue is the one that I would stress. The inspections and and that that people that that are renting. If you go to a motel, you expect that it has smoke detectors, that has a fire detection system. It's it's a given. And so anybody that's coming in and running from from a then Airbnb or a Vacasa. Can really have the same expectation that that they're um walking into something that's been, that's been checked and is safe. And I think that's where we, we, that's really the basis for this, for this um ordinance. I mean, the uh, the revenue portion, yes, is is there, but. It's I I think it's really, it's certainly, um, it was Bill Sweet's thrust that it's a a safety issue.
Yeah, so yeah, that that definitely is um something that probably should be like in the introduction of our meeting. You know, this is why we're doing it. Um, Andy, or are are you gonna be able to make that meeting?
The eleven? Yeah, by Zoom I can. I I won't be home. I'm not coming home until more Memorial Day.
Okay.
But I'll be there by Zoom if it's for, or we could just do a FaceTime so I could just be. Interacting with any one of our members.
Yeah, well, let's let's stick to Zoom.
Okay.
Um, because it's it's set up, it works pretty darn well.
So I I had a, I had a thought, well, you know, I obviously have read all the comments we've gotten. There were some that were actually. Deleted by the system because of the derogatory nature of the comments.
Oh, really?
Facebook actually proactively removed the comments because of the language it was used in it, so.
How many of those?
About half a dozen.
Wow.
Yeah. Um, they got into back and forth with people. I. You know, when it comes like the zoning things, when I think of like, you know, when you think of, people think of zoning, they're like. It's telling me what I can and can't do with my property.
Right.
Which this is not designed or intended to tell you what you can or cannot do. If you make a choice to participate in this program, here are the rules to which you must participate by. That's it.
I I'd also clarify, uh, Bill, something that you just said in terms of zoning. Zoning doesn't tell you what you can or cannot do with your property. What it does is it sets out sections and provides parameters around which people can use that area of land. For various types of work. So because I think one of the things that often gets thrown at us is that. I don't want anybody telling me what I can or can't do. And and I think that that's a false statement from the beginning. Because we need.
Stereotyping zoning.
Well, it is stereotyping zoning, but it's also uh uh setting up a confrontational approach between the uh. The general population of a town and their their global interests and individual interests. And it doesn't focus enough on the intersection between the general interest. And the individual interest, which I think if you take a safety perspective, that those should be common. And so sometimes we get these polarizing statements or comparisons. That separate us into camps rather than unite us.
Okay, let's say focus on the frequently asked questions.
I I am. I'm trying to do that by saying that what we need to do is make sure that our questions do not. Lend themselves to a polarization in the response.
No, no, that's no, that's, yeah, that 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 is not intended here and.
Just asking us to be careful.
So, yeah, so you're, you're, you're right, Dana, like, it's not, you're right, it's it's like. This could be this here and this could be here, this could be here, but that's not what this is about. Like, it really doesn't have anything to do with zoning. And, you know, I mean, so one of the things I wrote down is, how many Vermont towns have the ordinance? So I can, I can, there there there's actually. An actually not difficult way to kind of figure that out. So that's one of the things to go on there too. It's like, this isn't just us, this is. Ludlow and Chester and Killington and Burlington, like some small towns and big towns like, um, but.
Do you have a number?
I can try and get it for you, but I I, yeah, I, the uh, that Vermont.
That that would be a good question answer.
Yeah.
Could be. That's why I wrote down.
And I think, you know, an extension. Oh, if you have something else, Bill. Okay, an extension of the zoning question is, why are? And and this is not how the question in the frequently asked questions would be phrased. But the sentiment is, why are we picking on these small business people? Or these people just trying to make a little extra income or have a little side income, have a little business? So um are we being unfair to those who are running short-term rentals?
Oh, it's gotta be, you know, safety, anybody can do it, if they can do it, fine, but it's gotta be done. Safety books.
Safety is, right.
But in fourteen.
Seventeen? Thank you.
And not little, not little towns either, Manchester and Burlington and there's some good sized towns in there, so.
So why don't we list them out with this too? You know, wh- when we put it all together, we don't have to do it right now.
And to your point, Howard. Um, if if somebody wants to operate a restaurant and sell alcohol, they need a liquor license. You're not gonna pick on somebody who wants to run a restaurant and not sell liquor. But if they start or have an interest in selling liquor, they have to, they have to conform for safety reasons. And I I think that that's the commonality. If we can focus on what the commonality is, the common interest between the individual and the and the group. We should be in good shape.
Well, it it it, I don't think this public meeting um is going to get to the point where we get everybody thinking. The same way. We're we're going to, we're going to hear what they have to say. And we're gonna have to answer their questions. And some are still gonna go away mad, some are not gonna be convinced. But we've aired it. So it it's not gonna be an exercise in trying to con- convince people. To to accept this ordinance.
Yeah.
This is an airing of what they think.
Forum for discussion.
Yeah.
Yes.
And for us to be able to present the whys and wherefore's.
Right.
And the rationale for implementing.
So one of the, so so we've got the zoning thing, we've got, you know, you know, I'm just trying to run a business here. Um, and maybe the next one after that or an extension of that is um. If they're paying their taxes, why should this matter? Um, but they're not, they're not paying rooms and meals, right? But even if someone's. But but I I I think it might come up. It could come up again.
So, but like to Dana's, Dana's thing, like. If they're running a restaurant, they get like, it's just because you're doing one does not mean you you get to do everything. Like, that's why we have. Permits for other things and like, if you want to dig, if you need to dig dig a waterline across the road, you need to get a permit to do that. If you pay taxes, that doesn't mean you get to dig up a road for free. Like, so there's there's more to it than that, so.
It's a good example in the um, in the uh easement that we were talking about with, uh, yeah, not the easement, the um. Uh, the waiver uh that we were talking about for the power ones. I mean, normally they should be buried under uh underground so that they're not creating a hazard. For um other residents in the town when we're looking at our um. Uh, our subdivision ordinance. And uh, we we, there can be waivers and those waivers are based on uh mitigating circumstances. So what our role is to find out what is the generally acceptable practice. And I think Barbara, to the, your point, seventeen towns adopting something like this indicates that people are moving towards a generally accepted practice.
We are in the forefront though.
Should be.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yes, I mean, there was a lot of talk about this and there's been some movement to accepting these, but. Um, seventeen's not a whole lot when you consider the two hundred and forty-seven or however, however you count the number.
I agree that the, it's not a, well, that's just on, that's the ones that the Vermont. Short-term rental association website has found or listed. So that's, it may not even be a whole list, that's just, that's just, that's just part of it.
Those are the ones who have completed it and have it.
Have it adopted.
Adopted. And there there are others working on.
Yeah.
But also, it may not be also the quantity, but the type of like, you know, there's, it's some, it's some towns that are some bigger towns that are that are addressing this also. It's not just. Like, you know, Danby's saying, saying like, we're gonna do it, like, it's it carries more weight than that, so.
Yeah. So back to the taxes thing, I mean, everyone else, the B and Bs and. Anyone else running a a lodging business out of their home is paying state taxes, room and meals.
They're supposed to.
And they're licensed.
And they're licensed.
Right.
Okay, so yeah, I just wanted to make sure we we all got that in our heads.
Bill, how do, do you know how many Airbnb or similar ads there uh uh? Dwellings there are available in the town now being advertised?
About thirty.
So I think that's a big number that, and I think that should be something that comes out in the.
Yeah, although I, one one of the Facebook posts, you know, we've listed that number.
Okay.
And 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 one of the posts said like, thirty, what's the big deal essentially, you know?
There are three on one street. Like, that becomes, that that, like we talked about, not wanting to have an impact on a neighborhood, that's three on one street, like. So there's, there's other, there's other factors than just having them exist.
Um, so there are implications uh for the quality of um. Living experience for residents who have chosen an area that is designated on our land use map as residential. That no longer is residential, that becomes commercial. And I think that we need to be able. You're wincing, Barbara, but.
Well, I mean, it's it's kind of a, it's a fine line there. It's a gray area. Is it really commercial or or not? I mean, I I.
I guess it depends on how it's really being used.
I mean, so, so I think in terms like, I and I think. Marie Marie brought that point up is that their their neighborhood has covenants that if the. Property owner is not abiding by them, that's not something we are going to go and enforce. But it's something that the homeowner needs to be aware of, you know, that that maybe they know, maybe they don't know.
Yeah. So, yeah, let me keep working through this list of what has been brought up. Um, long-term rentals as opposed to short-term rentals. Generate zero local sales room tax revenue. And that's just flat out wrong, right? Or 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 they're thinking of of landlords and tenants, right?
Versus renters, versus someone come up for the weekend, the person paying the Airbnb is paying, the town's getting the one percent. Tax from that, whereas a a long-term renter, somebody that's just living, living there, isn't paying. The one percent tax, but I would argue that. If if it's gonna be used, we wanna collect, we wanna collect our, we wanna, we know it's one percent, it's still very important. But if it's a long-term person, they're committing, they're contributing to the community in other ways. If it's a short-term rental person, that's how they're contributing to their community by getting the one percent sales tax.
Well, um, if you look at it, the the long-term renter. Um, is paying uh. Income taxes to the state, which benefits everybody in the state.
Yep.
It it's not designated for any particular neighborhood.
Right.
However, someone who's coming up for a rental. Isn't paying anything in terms of income tax to the state or anywhere.
Right.
So the the purpose on this is to regulate it as if it is a commercial business interest. Which it is, whether it's huge.
Right.
Or whether it's small. So going back to what Barbara had said, why does it matter if they're only thirty? So if if there are only uh thirty convenience stores in Burlington. We don't have to, we don't have to have them uh charge sales tax because it's a small number. I mean, that is not a logical.
Okay, let's look at this um from another perspective.
I was gonna say safety, we we don't, I think safety, all these things we're talking about, safety is is a component of it.
But but also.
You made a great point. I mean, like, if you go to a hotel, if you go, if you go to a Days Inn. You go to Days Inn, you're gonna expect that their fire alarm work and that, like, these, it's been inspected and it's safe and someone coming up or isn't. Necessarily thinking about that because they're they're, I'm renting a house, like, they're they're not thinking about those kinds of things. That's why we're doing it. On their behalf, as the state does for regulating hotels and motels.
Okay, yeah. So 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 I've got a couple offshoots of this.
Yeah.
Um, one is, I mean, aren't long-term rentals, I mean, isn't that housing?
Yes. Yeah.
As as opposed to a vacation place.
I I think, I I think that was the intent was, it's a residence, not a rental. Like, if somebody that lives there, three sixty-five, not for a weekend.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what I took from long-term rental.
Yeah, I mean, it's one person didn't, but.
And the, and these properties really should be assessed. As a commercial property with the income and expense. And like any business, they're they're assessed. Primarily income and expense and.
Yeah.
And it makes a huge difference in a residence if all of a sudden they're they're gonna be based on their, you know, income and expense. Uh, for that year, it it would be, could be a huge, huge difference in that, for that, for the benefit of the town.
And I don't know, should we make, I mean, an an extension of this discussion about, is it housing or is it, you know, a vacation place? Is, is it taking away housing from local residents? Do we want to get into that? Or is it a good argument?
I I would agree with Andy, yeah.
No, I'm sorry. I thought I was muted and I was just gonna unmute myself.
I agree with you, Andy, but go ahead.
You're busted, Andy.
Do, I don't think we should go down that road. Even, we shouldn't even look at it. Um, we should.
That's a philosophical discussion.
We should say, on on the safety thing and the and the fact that if anyone questions any part of this ordinance. It just essentially ask them what they would change, how they would, how they would change it, what what they feel is wrong about it. This is just an informational meeting and and I think we should also stress that we do not implement this.
Right.
Ordinance. And I think that should be, okay, I'm, you know, I can't stress that enough. I mean, that. That we have to say that it's the the select board that is positively the people that are. And so that, I I think that way we can just keep the the um. The question short and sweet and and explain it, what we have to people and let it go. Obviously, we're not gonna have pros there. I mean, and, you know, we're gonna have cons, so to speak, I I believe, just, it's most hearings I've. I've been part and parcel with, it's, it's the people that are unhappy that are gonna show up. So.
Yes, yes. I I'm not sure the select board's gonna have a hearing, a public meeting. Uh, they don't have to. And I think this might be the one meeting for this ordinance. So we can't. You know, fob off too much here. Um, and some select board members will most likely be in attendance too.
But but it's not our decision to have this. I mean.
Right.
We're not making the decision that this is needed and we should have it. We're we're just attempting to implement it.
No, we're providing input to the select board as asked.
Okay.
About who who else is doing this and the the getting our perspective as.
Well, that that raises a good question. Do we support this as a group? Are we gonna stand by this?
Oh, if it's, again, if it's done with safety, if it's done properly and in the right places, what's wrong with it?
Right.
But.
Andy?
But let's, let's make a motion and vote it.
Oh, you wanna do that now? You wanna finish everything?
Fine by me, Andy. I'm, I'll be glad to make a motion that that uh we um, the. Rutland Town Planning Commission has reviewed and drafted an ordinance regarding short-term rentals and and uh. And we stand behind it. We believe it's a good thing for the town.
Okay, a motion has been made.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Seconded. Discussion?
Uh, the only thing, uh, Andy, that I would object to is that we haven't done a final review. Um, and so I think it. Um, and so I think it might be premature for us to actually vote on, on that question. And, uh, I, I think that once we, um, or, we're not gonna have another meeting, right?
It's, it's the next meeting.
It's the next meeting.
And, 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 um.
Let's, let me, let me withdraw my motion, and.
But, but hold on.
I'll make it at a more appropriate time.
Hold on, w- we are not, w- we will not be, um, approving a final version. That is the select board's.
Decision, correct.
So whatever, I mean, if we pass Andy's motion as his original motion, or not, it's still, it's not gonna be a final. Draft, it's still a draft. So I, I think the question is, do we support the draft, the concept?
I, I, that's what I was. Going to, um, highlight, because Andy was making a motion about this. To accept this, which is not our place, and we haven't done our own review, so I think. Andy's motion would be better stated as, uh, we, we support the select board in the concept of putting together. A, um, uh, short-term rental ordinance. That would help improve, uh, that would help, uh, foster the health and safety of anybody. Um, making use of those properties in the town.
Andy?
Um, let's, I'm fine with it any way we wanna do it here, um. I'll, I'll be glad to amend my emotion to as, as how it's been, uh, stated by Dana.
Okay, Dana, repeat it.
Well, Bill's got it, I'm sure, it's on tape.
It's recorded, yeah, you're good, you're good.
So we, we approve of, the, essentially, we approve the process of.
The concept.
The, 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 that, that the select board.
A- actually, if I could, I think maybe we'd, we could easily do it a little easier and just say. We're approving, sending this document to the select board.
Well, there, yeah.
Yep.
Which then, which then makes it obvious that we're. Um, that we're behind it.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So approving.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't approve the sending to the select board for their review.
I think that makes sense, uh, how about the second or?
Oh, sure.
Yes, I'm fine with it.
Okay with that.
Yes.
Any other?
So do you want me to re- re- restate that?
No, no, we're good with it.
Is that without review, or, but?
I, I think Andy's motion is like, at this point in time, we are, we approve.
Is there, I mean, are there any changes that we wanna make to it, or like, is this, is everybody good with it as it's, as you've got it in your hands?
Do we wanna wait on this, um, you know, I, I'm just thinking, like, if we're asked at the public meeting, well, do you guys support this? What, what is our answer gonna be?
And I think, they would be saying like, are you really supporting the creation of this ordinance? Answer would be, yes.
Yes.
Are you, you know, which is different than, are you in favor of enacting the document that sits in front of us today?
It's a different.
But we have, we haven't finished, we haven't finished it yet, are we in favor of the ordinance as, on its face? Yes. Do we know, is this the final draft? No.
Yeah.
It's two, it's really two different, two different questions.
Yeah, I, I, I think that might answer questions, is that answer, Howard?
Well, that's.
I, hang on.
Yeah, I was, go ahead, Howard, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Now, I was gonna do a more generic comment, I think we, uh. We need to, we need to come up with, with reasons why we, why we support this. Okay, and safety is one. Uh, and, and the fact that we're not telling, not stopping anyone from doing anything, but. Just putting guidelines around it, and those guidelines are for safety, so that, so can, we can fall back on that and not have to go into. It's happening here, or what happens there.
Yep.
Uh, and, and the fact that if, if, if this is a business, if someone's running a business. Businesses have guidelines and have to be licensed and have to, have to do certain things in order to run the business.
Mm-hmm.
But, I, I think if we're able to, to put together three or four of those. We can always go back to them when any of these questions come up. Uh, I don't mean, that, that's the only thing we say, but that's, that's the essence of, of why we're doing this.
Mm-hmm, and so we got a couple, um, any others who wanna add to the list? We've got, we've got safety, we've got that, you know, this. This, this is considered a business, so businesses usually have guidelines, requirements.
Um. Do we wanna, well, well, we've, in our ordinance, and I'm looking at them now, um. We talk about, it, it, one is to preserve and protect residential neighborhood character and livability. I think that's a little fuzzy to, to use in response to a question.
But there, there, I mean, we are, we are trying to keep the character of neighbor, neighborhoods.
Well, there's another one here, to preserve the character of the neighborhood, guests shall not have an adverse. Uh, effect on the character of the neighborhood of the property, that the property is located in.
Mm-hmm.
It needs to be reworked, but that's.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else, anyone notice that should be part of our core message? That we fall back on? Okay, think about that, and if anything comes to mind, just throw it out there. Um, Andy, uh, what would you like to do with your motion at this point?
I don't know, I'm kind of lost track here.
I think that's a leading question, Andy.
Yeah, it is, uh. Well, I think we should, w- we should certainly, we need to make a motion to send this to the select board anyway, correct?
Well, I think we should wait and hear what, I mean, that's what we said, we would get input from the public.
Okay.
Gather that, um, and, you know, and incorporate that as, as needed in our draft. And then send it to the select.
Well, I think with discussion we just had, we really didn't have any pros or cons there, one way or the other, so. Uh, what I just, well, I'll withdraw my motion right now, and we'll just, um, later on in the meeting, if we wanna talk about it again, we can. If everybody's comfortable with that.
Okay, so we support the concept, and here are some reasons why. Safety.
The, the other thing, Barbara, I think that it will be important to highlight, is that we are, as part of the charge from the select board. They have asked us to solicit input from the public.
Mm-hmm.
And so the meeting then is an opportunity for the public to tell us what, uh. In the ordinance, as Andy was saying earlier, uh, impacts them. And if there's something that adversely impacts them, how could that be modified to have less of an impact on them?
Okay.
I think that that also helps us to reach out and say, hey, we're all in this together, we're trying to make sure that. Whatever document goes to the select board is something that people have had ample opportunity.
Okay, okay.
Right.
Okay, I think we've, I think we've got that down, um, one of the questions that came in is, um. I- if we pass, if this is adopted and enacted in Rutland Town, um, can. Can a, a, a house, you know, that's used for these purposes, still be a primary residence of the owner?
Yes.
If they live there, yes.
It's, it's occurring currently.
But it can only be the primary residence if the person is living in that structure.
And how is it working, are, are they like leaving for?
Scenario where there is a, a homeowner who, when their house is rented, they leave the house.
Right, same, yeah.
And they return after this, so they live there, I mean, to be primary, it's more than, more than, you do live majority of the year. So they're not, they're not renting it more than six months of the year, they're, but they are. Um, they, they live there, and then when it's rented, they leave the residence for that period of time.
Yeah, really good answer there, um. As long as the owners are paying their taxes, this shouldn't matter to the town.
That's not a question.
But then, um.
Safety.
Help, the safety and all that thing. I did not understand the canine rooster.
Yeah, and that, that was, that was interesting type comment, so, yeah, I, I don't know why they brought that up either, but, yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, I got the snide part, but I, I have no idea what the roosters.
It's our police canine, it's our police dog.
Oh. When did we get a police dog?
Couple months ago.
Okay.
He, he's been in training, he's been on the road for a couple weeks, so it's not, you, he's, he, he, if you stay tuned to Facebook, I guess, I'll, I'll trace the pictures later, but yes, we have, we have a dog.
Cool.
And his name's Rooster, yep.
Um, is this? Uh, is this about vagrants, drug dealers, and panhandlers? If we get that question.
Didn't they say, don't we have an ordinance about that or something? Didn't that comment have that in there? Cause we were, we repealed the ordinance.
Right.
So, we don't anymore.
And, and this is about the safety, if anyone, uh, for anyone who is a, uses these, one of these.
Mm-hmm.
I, I get terminology, one of these dwellings, I keep coming up with dwellings, but anyone who is an Airbnb, uh, customer, this is about their safety. That's what this is about, it's not about any.
I mean, um, right, I mean, it could be about, you know, heavy partying and that sort of thing. But it's, it's not a way to try to.
Regular.
Yeah, or to address the vagrant issue and drug dealers, and it's, it's housing units, right, is the term we have in the ordinance?
Uh, yeah.
Not dwellings.
I think, I think it's housing, yeah.
Those units, okay.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, did you have a comment, Howard?
No.
Um. Yeah, um, the, the, the housing shortage came up several times in, on Facebook. Uh, you know, in the sense of, you know, i- is this aggravating the issue? Of people not being able to find housing.
Uh.
Affordable housing.
If someone's.
No.
I mean, there, there are people arguing against the fees, because it's, it's homeowners, you know, were, were like, almost like punishing the homeowner. But if, if they decide to not participate, then aren't they living in the house, or doesn't that not? I mean, I don't really see either way, I, I mean, I understand how like, like, you know. Burlington had taken aggressive approach, like no more than thirty percent, things like that, like, they have a much, much stricter ordinance about this. Because so many people were turning them into short-term rentals, there weren't, it was a legitimate issue. I don't think the housing stock in the town is the same ratio of apartment complexes, things like that, like, it's not that. I don't think. I don't think, eh, looking at Rutland Town, having this ordinance, cause this ordinance, by the way, doesn't say you, it doesn't say you must, or you, or you. Can't do any of this, so, we, we're not making the decision on, on availability of housing, that's still the property owner's decision, so. If you don't want zoning, this supports that, like.
Yeah.
It's not telling you you can or can't, so.
There, there is some afford, I mean, there is some affordable housing in, in Rutland Town, and so I think one of the arguments is that. Um, s- some of these, uh, land, some of these, these owners of these houses, these housing units. Um, make more money doing short-term rentals than they would by flipping the house and maybe providing. You know, housing for a local resident or someone looking to move into Rutland Town. That's what they're, they're asking, is, you know, is that?
And there's.
That's an irrelevant question to us.
Adopting a regulation like Burlington, there's nothing we're gonna do to change that.
Right.
Right, a- and, and Dana, um, I, I, I don't think it is appropriate for us to say, that's. During the hearing, that's an inappropriate question to.
I, I have no plan to say that during a hearing, I'm telling us that that's an inappropriate question for us to have to undertake, so we better rephrase the question.
I think that's beyond this, I mean, addressing how did short, housing shortages is beyond the scope of what this meeting is designed to do. And that's a discussion to have at another time, but it's not something that we're gonna answer in the meeting, it's not really, and it's not something really. At this time related to the ordinance.
We're not charged to look at that.
It's, it's not, but it's a hot topic, and people just might wanna talk about it. You know, how is this helping the housing shortage, or, you know, can, you know, is it, should we be doing more about the housing shortage? So I just think we need a good answer for that.
We, we had a, we had that housing project that wanted to come into town, we were ready and, ready right behind them to help them move in, and it was the. Property, it was the sale of the property that fell through, so we support those things. But there's only, there's only so much we can do, we can't force people to do one thing or the other, and, and. Yeah, I, I, yeah.
But thi- this doesn't, this does not impact the housing shortage, I mean, the, 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 the straight answer to that is that this doesn't impact. That's the housing shortage in a, in a negative, in a pro, in a negative way. I shouldn't say, it just doesn't impact the housing shortage. I, we don't wanna get into the fact that we'd be better off if, if there was a residential.
That's a philosophical.
That's a philosophical question.
Yeah, explain to me why this doesn't address the housing shortage, or, 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 there's no connection.
Because there's no, there's no loss of, there, there are no fewer housing, there, there's no fewer housing. Uh, dwellings or whatever available as a result of this.
Some people are arguing there are.
Well, what, what, what is, wha- in what way? I, I mean, I'd have, we'd have to hear that.
Mm-hmm.
What do they think is happening? I, I, I'm not sure, I heard what Bill said, they think they're not making as much money? I mean, I, I don't understand how.
They, they, they're thinking they're being out, outpriced out of places, because the owner of the home can make more money with short-term rentals. Then he can't, then he, you know, on an ongoing purpose, on an ongoing basis, as opposed to renting it out or selling it.
And, and it's fine, and we're not stopping him from doing that, we're saying, but if you're gonna do that, there's safety concerns.
Right.
There are concerns for, for the, the neighborhood.
So the point, yeah, go ahead.
Whether we have this ordinance or not, that scenario still exists.
Yeah, it does, it does, and, and, you know, it, it's just a hot topic, and people, some people may just say. But, you know, don't you want to do some more to address the housing crisis?
And my response would be very respectfully, the charge from the select board to the planning commission. Was to look at this ordinance and review it for, uh, its applicability to our situation. And making sure that anybody that would participate in this type, type of venture could be doing so. With health and safety as the primary objectives, that's what our charge was. You can open up a philosophical conversation at a different time, but that's not why we're here.
Yeah, but we, but we don't want the same answer for every question.
I wouldn't be giving the same answer for every question.
Well, it's kinda, we're kinda getting to that point where it's like, safety, and, and that, you know, we're coming back to just the same stuff. And we're, we're gonna just sound like puppets. So, I mean, I think we have to. Maybe have a broader, slightly broader message, or just be open to the topics they bring up. And, and, um, hear them out, and not just have a canned answer.
So Barbara, if I, if I'm hearing your conundrum. And this is something that Fern tells me that I spend way too much time doing. Uh, you're trying to answer and satisfy the people on this side. Who say that we're restricting their rights as property owners, and that this ordinance is, uh, injuring them. And then on the other hand, we are trying to address or appease those people who are advocating. For not having any of this happening in town at all. Because they believe that the, just the concept of short-term rentals is being injurious to. Low-income renters, or something like that, I, I don't know. So when you, when you get into that type of dichotomy, that is outside the scope of what our charge is. And I have no trouble explaining that we have a charge, and that those issues. As relevant as they may be to the individual, are not what the select board has asked us to review.
O- okay, so what exactly has the select board asked us to do?
They have asked us, my understanding is to look at what other towns have done. In terms of short-term rentals, to look at, uh, identifying the number of short-term rentals that we have. Look at patterns or tendencies, and to get out ahead of a new. Um, area, just like solar panels ten years ago, that we wanted to make sure we had some understanding about. And we had, uh, a way of protecting the interests of the general population in our municipality. The general population including residents, as well as visitors. And that's why we are looking at this through a lens of multiple perspectives, that's why we have invited people to come in. And talk to us about the reasonable nature of the uh guidelines that are being put in place. To help regulate an emerging industry.
But so far, all of our answers to any of those potential questions has been, well, we're doing this. For the sake of, you know, better safety.
Well, we had a list, uh, and I have four things.
So it sounds like we've already made up our minds. Um, and and we're, we we have, it sounds like we just have one answer to everything. Which I'm not sure is our good thing.
I I I would disagree because I see there's nuances to the different types of questions, and we've gone through probably a half dozen, maybe more. Uh, questions, uh, which uh include, uh, how many towns have this ordinance? Seventeen. Uh, how many other towns are working on it? We don't know. Um. Uh, how, if people are paying taxes, why does it matter? And we have an answer for that, that there, um, it's like running any type of lodging business. And you have to comply, when you're in an industry, you have to comply with the standards of that industry. That is a completely different answer. Uh, it doesn't mean that we've made up our minds about anything, because we don't, not the ones who make the decisions anyway, it's the select board. Select board has charged us with gathering the information both from us and from the community, that's why we're inviting them in.
I I can see some people taking exception to us labeling it industry. Um, it's it's.
I would, at this point, probably disagree, I mean, I.
Yeah, I know.
They they would feel like this is, I I'm not part of an industry, I'm just doing this, but when you look at. What Airbnb is, what VRBO is, I mean, when when Killington has seven hundred of them.
You know, maybe what we should do is do a little, a short presentation of what is out there on. On those those webpages and those those services. Should we, or?
I I think that's, I think that's opening up a can of worms that we don't necessarily want to open up. I have an example, however, and you can talk about industries, and you have two high-profile examples. Uber and Lyft. And the Supreme Court decided that they were an industry that needed to be regulated. Because they were basically functioning as taxi. Um, a taxi operation, and no, their employees were not private contractors. So there is a general interest that goes beyond us, now, once again, I'm crossing over into the philosophical, and I'm not sure that I want to be there.
What you said, and that is philosophical, yeah.
But you, yeah, that's, those were originally, the argument was that it wasn't an industry, and so to your point, Bill. When an, when something new is emerging, it may not be. Uh. Tagged as an industry, but Vermont is very creative. We talk about cottage industries, we talk about very small businesses, we talk about micro businesses. And, you know, so uh in- industry can take on a much bigger uh definition.
Right, and I I think it's used as like a generic term to to say that, but.
But some, some people might not.
We we have a maple syrup industry in Vermont.
Right.
How was, how was the individual sugar maker?
Okay, yeah, okay, so.
We we could, we could take that to a, to a whole other level.
We can, let's bring it back, do we want to show? These services and what is being offered, it will that impart more information, show people. More about what's going on in town than just saying, whoa, you know, we've, we've seen evidence of thirty houses. Do we want to get into a little more detail?
Like, what kind of detail?
Like, show, show a webpage of some of the ads.
What's the purpose?
The the purpose is to give them a a better idea of of of, you know, what what is going on in town. And how these homes are being.
I I I don't, I I I kinda like the, I like the idea of like, jump people like, here's some examples, real-world examples of your town. The logistics are a different problem, because if we have this room full, the only way to show it is up there, so that could be a little.
Well, we could have, we could have, we could print out P, uh, do a PDF of it.
We, we could, let me.
I'm just thinking that, you know.
Let me think, let me think about that, like a little, little power.
We usually, yeah, usually start a a public meeting out with with this, a bit of a presentation.
Yeah. Um.
Man, it just occurred to me that maybe we want a little bit more data.
Okay, what if we, um. Okay, let's, let's, maybe, and and if we have a good way to deliver it, yeah. Um. But. Most of the sites like Airbnb, don't, you don't get to see specifics until you become a member, so. And not that it's like, I haven't made that point, but, you know. We don't usually get into the discussions of like the specific things like that until it's.
Can we get into a description of how this system works? Like, I mean, I don't think most people know, you know, how how do you get into one of these houses, or what what websites or services do you look for? Can we?
Can I get a word anytime, Barbara, when? I'd like to be recognized sometime soon.
Go ahead, sorry.
Well, I didn't wave my hand at you, but I don't think you've been seeing me, okay. I think we can make some real quick assumptions, number one, all the people that are coming to the meeting are going to have read this ordinance, and are going to be somewhat familiar with it. Cause I think, on, well, it should be, I mean, they're they're coming in to comment about an ordinance, they certainly are going to be able to read it. Right, we're gonna have copies of it for them.
Ask.
When, when they arrive, correct?
Yep, that that would be a good initial question.
Ability to engage.
Yeah, I'm not convinced, Howard, they will have done it.
I I I still feel that that. Other than that, we we say why we've done it, we're doing it from a safety thing, from from a tax standpoint, from a tax, you know, to. Make sure that there's tax equitability, other than that, I think, then we just ask the person. Well, what would you change about this ordinance? If if you're not happy with this, what would you do differently? And we certainly did that at some of the, um. And the very contentious, um, solar panel hearings back from before most of your own board, but I'm sure, Howard, you remember a few of them. That, uh, and and. And that's all you can really do, I mean, that's what it is, it's for public input. And so therefore, if if the person is unhappy with the document that we've put forth, it it stands to reason that they'll have. An alternative suggestion. Now, the alternative suggestion could be very basic, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, but uh, on the other hand, there might be some people that have read it and might might have some, some suggestions they'd like to make one way or the other. I I think we're getting worried about. People coming in on the attack, and I I just don't think that's gonna happen, at least I hope not.
Well, yeah, we 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 hope not to, uh, but we're gonna prepare.
They do, right.
We're gonna prepare for the worst and hope for the best.
Convince people, we're just trying to answer their questions. I mean, they don't, they don't have to agree with what we say.
Right.
Right, and we don't have to convince them.
We don't have to convince them, just tell them. What, why are we doing this?
Answer your questions to the best of our ability.
Yeah.
But, like you said, final approval or denial of this going into effect. Lies at the hands of the select board, so this is to gather information to deliver that to the select board. You know, and. You know, like, you know, we're 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 kind of on track for kind of where I thought we'd be at this point, so that's good, I guess. Um, but, you know, I I think, I think the meeting's gonna be interesting, I think there's gonna be people on both sides of it. I think, like, we have the letter from Maria, I think, who was in favor of it, and then other people, there, there are people that are absolutely in favor of it.
Yep.
But is most of these discussions that I've seen and other topics, the people that are against it are the ones that come out and are the loudest. And the ones that are for are like, uh, you know, yeah, I'm good, like, and they just are.
Yeah, and and there may be a difference in who has read it and who has not read it.
Yeah, yeah.
How that lays out, um, so let's explore a little bit more, you know, between now and the eleventh. About whether we can do some sort of presentation, uh, see if that's, you know, possible at all.
Yeah, we can, we can talk about that.
Yeah, just.
A- another way of focusing the conversation would be in the first few minutes. Before we actually do any type of the presentation or an introduction. Is ask people to write down, can have note cards or pieces of paper, write down questions that they have. Okay, and then one or two of us during the meeting can go through, so I'm just gonna make it up. Sherman and I can sit down, take these questions, put them into an order to see what they can, and uh, what they have. Put together, seen commonalities, while somebody else is doing a presentation, and then hand that list of questions to someone who's leading the meeting. And say, here are the five essential questions that we have gathered from the input that you have written down. And we will try, these are the most salient ones, and we'll try to answer them. At the end of that question-answer period, if you, if there's a question that you have, um, that hasn't been addressed. Feel free to.
Okay.
Uh, I I don't, I don't like that.
Why?
Uh, I, because, I mean, I just want, I want everyone to to be able, even if they're being repeating what someone else said. I want everyone to have a chance to have their say. And I I don't want us to be editing those at all and determining which ones are most pertinent.
The other thing that we may want to think about is in your operating rules of procedure.
Yeah.
Is a section, which I leave on the table over there, for public participation.
Right.
Yeah.
So I think it would probably be good to review that right before the meeting and just remind people, like, here are, like. I was planning to make, to say there's like. To be, to to.
The ground rules.
Yep.
We have, we have a set of rules for public participation, and if it gets out of hand, it will have to end. You know, cause that, that's the other thing, if we, you know, I I know your request, I think your request is gonna be approved.
It was, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, that's one help, but reminding people that, to be fair to everybody here. We have rules that we intend to make sure everybody follows.
That's a great idea.
We we have rules, we intend everybody to follow, please be respectful of other people's time, and so they're respectful of yours, like, and and if you need a copy, I'll have, I'll make.
But if there's only like three people in the audience, we probably wouldn't have to do that. Um, but, but yes, that would be, i- if the room is half full or more. We, that's a great idea, just to go through that.
Thought about that earlier, like, yeah.
I have a question for Bill.
Yeah.
Uh, Bill, uh, do you have any idea how many facilities there are that would come under this ordinance and currently?
In the town?
Yeah.
We have about thirty.
How many?
Thirty.
Really?
Yes.
Well, I, I. That surprises me, but on the other hand.
It did me too, Jim.
It it probably shouldn't, because if you stop and think about it. There's three major overnight lodging facilities that are not doing that. And, um. That's gonna, that's gonna continue to put the pressure on the these alternate.
Yeah.
Um. But options.
And and present a business opportunity.
Right.
For for residents.
And again, that goes back to like, we aren't telling anybody what you, if you, that you ha- must or can't do this. But.
We just want to know.
Somebody go to a convenience store without a gas station, but if you want to sell gas, well, now there's additional things you must, there's mu- things you must do because of that, and. That you're, you're free to live there and do essentially whatever you want to on your property, but if you're going to have people occupy your house. That aren't residents, then you have an obligation to their safety. Or, and you have an obligation to your neighbors, because. A lot, uh, the, some of the concerns I've gotten, I've gotten some phone calls, is people that live in fire districts. That have community wells or community septics, they say, we aren't designed to have a dozen people on a weekend. Every weekend, like, that's, that's something beyond the scope of the system, and and, you know, I've had the answer, I said, this is not something that we can address. With a regulation, that's the neighborhood that has to address that, so, you know, there are, there are concerns about that out there, but that's the other thing, is making people aware of. Their obligation to their neighborhood as well.
Yeah, and and Jim, it's not always, you know, local residents who are making money off this. We we got some comments like, you know, why don't we save our 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 housing or whatever, however you want to put it. For residents to buy and not investors, not, you know, can, can we limit what? The potential is to investors, you know, through this short-term rental system. So.
So how long a period of time does it take to get from, say, ten to thirty?
Don't know. I don't know, I started this beginning, about beginning of this year, and that's when I found them. I I have no idea how long it's taken to get to where we are now. No, nobody's been paying attention, that's the thing, but I I, and again, to that point, Barbara, like, it's, whether we have. Something that gives guidelines or regulations in place or not, people can, people can do whatever they want to with it, like, it doesn't. You know, we're, we're not, we're not saying. There's nothing in this that's gonna prohibit someone from using their house as a, as a short-term rental, whether it's here or not.
Yeah.
Like, and that's the thing, it's like, I understand there, there, I understand that point of view, but there's no regulation that we're going to do. Short of owning and really strict zoning on really specific situations that's gonna stop that from happening.
Okay, okay.
The the other thing, and this is just for information, and I'm not suggesting that I, we all say it at a public hearing, but. Um. If there are, uh. Vermont is a vacation destination, whether we uh want to admit that or not. And so there are certain attractions, and we want people to come and spend time here and spend money here, I mean, that's. A fact of life. There are problems with that in terms of whether it, how it gets, uh, how we promote our regular communities. Not gonna get into a philosophical discussion, however, when you have big interests, such as in the Outer Banks. Of North Carolina. They have had put in uh requirements that if you're doing this type of short-term rental and you have more than one property. You need to have a Realtor's license in order to be able to do that. And what that does is it makes, it imposes another level of burden. That if you are, that, because that's showing that that's more of a business model than it is a residential model. And so now you've really crossed over.
Right.
And into that.
And I, and I, I don't foresee that, he, but. But on on other, like, Burlington is probably the most restrictive one in the state, Woodstock is fairly restrictive. It limits the number of days per year outside foliage that you can, that you're allowed to do it, and you have, you have to, you have to register. And you have to report each one to them when they do it, and you can't rent more than X number of days, I mean, there's, there's a lot, a lot to theirs. That because they, because they're trying to limit the number of people during the peak season and off-peak season in the town.
Hmm.
You know, and that's, that's not what we're, what we're doing, I mean, I know, in far, as far as the towns, like, I think we're pretty medium. Of the road for for what we're asking of people, and. I, you know, I think someone that is legitimately not doing it, is, you know, that that's. A homeowner that owned a second property, and by the way, Jim, I I have about six. That the primary owners of the, of the properties do not live in Vermont. So, at least so far, so there are, there are six that the.
Twenty percent.
Yeah, that the primary, the owner of the property is not a Vermont resident. So that's important also for other reasons, so the other ones, they live here, so are they living there, part of the, we don't, we don't know, but. You know, that's where, if they're living out of state, we're asking them to have someone responsible for that property, so if. The sewer backs up, if a pipe breaks, someone is available to go there and help fix that, where right now, there is no obligation for anything. So if the person's there for a week and their first night they get there, the pipes break. There's nothing that says they have to have someone that's there to come, we're telling you, you need to have someone responsible, and by the way, you're telling us who it is. So, we're, 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 and and, you know, so we're making sure that, yes, it's safe, it's safe for the people coming. But that the owner takes responsibility for the property as well, so. We we, yeah, but like I said, about twenty percent don't live here, so, or at least don't list their primary, primary addresses here, so.
And to your point, Bill, if that were a long-term, uh, and this is, goes back to Barbara's uh question as well. If that were a long-term rental, they would have to have somebody who would be able to come and fix that toilet. Imme- immediately or within twenty-four hours, and so, uh, what this does is it brings in line. A a a question of service to the clients and to the community, that is a level of expectation. To the clients and to the community, that is a level of expectation that our town has come to expect.
Yeah.
And that's all we're.
Yeah, good, good discussion.
What other questions, I don't remember what other ones there were.
Uh, well, well, the one was, um, if it ain't broke, uh, you know. Don't, in in instead of saying, why fix it, don't fix it.
But then the argument is like, okay, so we wait till we have all these problems to start to do something, then we're, we're like. Six months away from being able to even address the problem, so.
Right.
The answer to the question is uh preventive maintenance. That's what we're doing, preventive maintenance. I don't know. I'm a big mouth. I'm also a big thinker. And if somebody comes up with a question. Just tell me when I can speak and when I can't speak and.
We'll take a little red light, green light for Dana.
There you go, red light, green light. Go.
I think I'll just have Dana take notes.
Happy to do that, too.
Dan, Dana, you do a transcript.
We need, we need word for word notes, okay, so.
Yeah.
Well, at some point, we are gonna have to get together to decide how we handle this whole thing.
Right.
Exactly. You know, wha- what's, how are we gonna do it? What, what are we as a planning commission member? Gonna do and what are our, what are our roles in this whole thing? In the May eleventh meeting. Are you gonna run the meeting? You're gonna answer all the questions or you are, does the first guy who, the first person who? Who comes up with an answer, answer it, or, I mean, we need to have some, some agree upon way to approach it.
You wanna buzzer for the desk?
My question will be, Barbara, would you like me to try to take a crack at that?
Really? You'll do that?
That's what exactly.
You'll do that?
I will.
I think that's all we need.
And if Jim has a question, he can just answer, and Howard, he can also just answer.
Yeah, I mean, I I just see the flow being much like our normal flow. Except, you know, the questions are gonna be, gonna be coming from, you know, over there. And if somebody wants to comment, someone wants to answer that question, just let me know. And.
If no one speaks up, you know that either you can ask me, or I will ask you.
I I think it'd be helpful, like, if some, someone could say, like, Trump say, I, you know, I'd like, I'd like to answer that question, or, you know.
Yeah.
Or like, like, say, like, you know, I'd, I'd just.
How we normally.
We can get a baton if you want to pass around, like, you know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if that's to be that formal with a baton, but.
The other thing that we could do prior to the, maybe we start fifty, maybe we convene fifteen minutes before the rest of the, before the hearing goes. Or before the presentation occurs, and we look at the um, uh, the Q and A. And we each identify something that speaks to us that we could try to address. So that, uh, say Howard um has a question on water, there's a question there and it has to do with water districts or something like that. And Howard could say, you know, I could give the information on that very succinctly, whereas Dana would ramble around for fifteen minutes and maybe not get to the answer. You know, so then that way, there could be a point person identified ahead of time. Who would probably speak up and ask you to be recognized to answer that question. That would give us a little bit of structure, and then if there uh is, um, you know, just a pause and nobody's answering. You can, Barbara, say, you know, uh, uh, Sherman, you had some good thoughts about this when we were uh working on it. Would you like to take first crack in? That way we can, we can uh structure who's doing what. And then if somebody else, when Sherman uh starts to speak and identifies a couple of things, uh, maybe uh Jim says, you know what? Uh, that, that makes me think that uh we could also add this. That way, it's an organic process, and Andy can be sitting on uh. Online, on screen, and muted, we'll have, we'll have him put his thumb up or something when he, he wants to speak. And maybe Andy uh can identify one of those Q and A questions, and we would invite him in. Long distance to actually address that particular question before any of us would speak to it.
Yep, yep.
Um, we just have a suggestion I'd like to make on this. If, if we have a room that is half full. Then I think you really have to, to go back to the, the strict way of everyone being recognized. Cuz if you don't do that, and our members start talking back and forth among themselves. The audience is just gonna take it upon themselves to join right in.
Yep.
And I, I've had that experience. And so unfortunately, you have to make go for more rigidity if there's a whole lot of people. I mean, if there's only three people, then sure, it can just be an open, open sided. Discussion with, with everyone, but I would say if there's more than. Even a half a dozen people, it should be everybody raising their hands and being recognized, including all, all our members.
Or another way of doing that is a sign up sheet, and we just go down, we just go down the list.
Yes.
For, for the public.
Being for, for the public, if there's more than six.
For the public. I, I have a sign in sheet, so that would be something to be like.
But make sure e- everyone who wants to speak fills it out, and then we go by that list.
So before, let, we'll, we'll, we'll talk before the meeting, cuz there's, there's things we could do, like, we can have, like, are you here to participate, or are you here to listen?
Right.
And.
Right.
Like, if you want it, if you just wanna listen, that's fine, but participate, you need to let us know, so.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that's what um, what Andy's saying, you know, we've been in meetings before where. If you do wanna say something, if you've got something to say, you s- you could, you sign up, there's a sign up sheet. And I, I, I think we're all talking about the same thing here, just maybe.
Yes, I agree.
We just wanna be careful we don't restrict somebody from all of a sudden saying that they, they wanna say something, but because they didn't sign up, they can't.
That's a good point.
Or the people that said they definitely want to participate, that we'll go through them first.
Right, right, and then, then open it up.
Yep.
Yep.
And we could follow the same rules that we had, uh, setting the rules of procedure, that um, other people who have already spoken to a topic. Would have to wait till somebody else who had not had a chance says something, and then we can make sure that everybody's included.
Why don't you just let it, why don't we just say anyone who's gonna attend a meeting should sign up, that way there's no.
Well, they need to, like, if you, if you come to the meeting, you're supposed to sign in.
You sign in.
And then there's, it's like a checkbox, if you want, if, if you want.
Well, it doesn't matter.
Tend to speak. That, that just gives us some, you know, a fair way of going down a list and making sure everyone that wanted to speak speaks.
When you get to the end of it, you could ask, is there anybody else?
That's right.
Right.
That's right.
Right. We don't, don't need to cut anybody short.
Right. Right, and and and, you know, I think we all should just keep in mind that we're, we're not. Our job is not to counter or to fully answer all of their questions, we wanted to hear their questions.
That may be a very important point to make at the start.
Yeah.
Well, that, that's just amongst ourselves.
Right, but, but even for.
Letting the public know.
Yeah, letting the public know is a good.
What you're always, that's, that's the role, yeah.
Well, is that in the, that should be in that policy that. If it's not, but yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah. It's an informational meeting, and it's not necessarily, we're gonna have an answer to every single.
That's right.
We just thought, but that was covered.
We will try to answer as many questions as we can. But this thing is all brand new. Um, so I've gone down the Facebook list pretty much, has anyone else heard anything? From the public about this? Um, and we got that one letter, uh, that, that one person also did a Facebook post about the, the covenants.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, and, and.
That's an important topic, but, but a lot of people don't realize that, like, we don't, we don't research them, we don't enforce them, like, that's an issue that the neighbors have to handle. Outside of the town.
It, it, um, so, so Andy, this is uh Hitsel, Hits- Hitsel Terrace. Is that, um? Okay, good to know. Um, is, i- is that a self governed neighborhood?
Um.
The, the, this one resident says there's covenants, so i- is it like the town doesn't have any say anyway?
No, no. No, there're gated covenants in our neighborhood, and, and they, they uh prohibit commercial business. Uh, you can, only allowed to have single family dwellings. Uh, it's just a whole, uh, a whole list of things, I wish I had, I. I, I would have loved to bring them down to you tonight, but I don't know of any way to get them right to you on now. Uh, and they've been checked, I have to say, um, we had some challenges to them, and they. We just got, we settled it short, just short of going to court. And the, the one neighbor that, uh, one, one person signed off on it and agreed that the covenants are valid. I've, I've been to three different attorneys and they, and they've all said it's the same thing, they're, they're valid and enforceable, however, they, they've gotta be. Um, to get enforcement, you have to go to civil court. Which makes it long and slow. And costly.
Right. And I'm also.
We don't know where this is gonna go on, on, on uh, the Airbnb part. For us there, we have certain, because we're a fire district, we have. Our operating permit only allows for so many homes of so many persons. And we're right up at our limit right now, so that it, that could be a potential issue.
And what, what would take precedent, the covenants or what, or what the town enacts and adopts? You know, i- if there's some.
Where's Norman when we need him? Uh, I have no idea, the, well, the covenant, if the covenants say there's, there's uh, it's, it's only. Single family dwellings, um. And if someone puts a, an Airbnb apartment in, I would assume that if we get people together and wanna spend the money to file, then we could. We could challenge them if in fact we wanted to.
Um, yeah.
I don't, I don't see that happening, to be honest with you.
Okay, Bill.
With the, with the ordinance. We'll, we'll.
Pardon?
A neighbor in a, in a. With, in, in a neighbor, in a neighborhood with a covenant violates our ordinance. And then says, we can, we, you know, they're operating without a license, I can issue them, I can, under, under the enforcement, issue a penalty. That day, and it's effective that day. If they're operating outside the deeded covenant, they have to get together, go to an attorney, file in court, wait for a hearing, which could take weeks and months. We have ability to act.
Immediately.
Immediately, they have to go through a, a different process.
So there has to be some sort of a balance between what's called for in the covenant and, and.
They're violating the covenant of the neighborhood, we aren't, we aren't going to address, we, we, we won't address that, we won't, we won't issue any action on that. Our action could potentially, as, as I'm thinking, it is, could be used in the court hearing. Because look, the town's taking this action, here's the proof of what's going on, they could use that, I, I suppose.
Yeah.
As a rationale for supporting why they're violating.
But, but we, we would act independently of anything the neighbors would do to try and force the deeds in their neighborhood.
Okay, yeah, the, the enforcement part, does, does our ordinance, would our ordinance hold weight? In a covenant bound neighborhood?
Yes, because they're still exist in the town. It's not like they, their covenant neighborhood, they become, you know, they don't, they, they still get town police, they still get town fire, they still get the roads plowed by us, so. Yeah, the things still apply.
Yeah.
Just like other, a municipality can't violate any um statutory provisions of.
Right, it's, it's a, well, yes, you're right.
Just.
Another level up, yeah.
Okay.
I, I don't know if we have any here in town, but do we have any neighborhoods that have HOAs in place?
Um, yes, uh, Win, Winridge, oh, Winmere.
Winmere, yes, Winmere.
Winmere?
Yeah.
So that would be interesting to see what would happen there. Uh, certainly that, that they would have some enforcement tooth.
I think.
That they could force on their own.
Yeah, so, so you're saying there's, there's probably a difference between a covenant neighborhood and an HOA.
What's, what's?
No, you, yeah.
Homeowners Association, they, they.
Oh, yeah.
They own everything in there.
I understand.
Working later with them.
Well, you have a number of HOAs, especially here in Florida, that. It's individual properties, but the hu- the HOA has a, a, a lot of strength, they. They can, they can impose fines and, and uh, they're like a small municipality, actually, is, is how they are. Even, even for properties that are, that are, um, that are individually owned. And my son lives in a neighborhood that, that, you know, you, you don't change your front door color without permission.
Right, right, so I, I guess if we get asked on the eleventh, this is applied to HOAs, we don't know.
We don't, it just is, as Bill pointed out real well, I think, that this ordinance handles.
Anything.
What it needs to handle as far as registration and everything else. If whether, if the, if the person is registering a house in a, in a, in a neighborhood with covenants is violating it. Then the neighborhood is gonna have to address that problem.
If, if.
You know, in civil court.
Wanted to rent their house, and they did it.
In an HOA or a covenant?
In HOA, so say they, they, they rented it as an HO, as, as part of an HOA. I don't think it would take long for them to figure out what was going on, but if they, if they followed our rules. We would have nothing, we would have, be like, as far as we're concerned, you're, 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 you're a private residence, like, that's it. The HOA may tell the person, hey, you, you know, that's, that's, that's against our rules, and they would take, they could take their own action against it.
Yeah, there, there might, there might be a little bit of a.
Right, but, but again, like, we, we would, if, if somebody in, in an HOA was not. Registered with us, we'd issue a violation, and just like they would, but it'd be independent of anything they do, so.
Yeah, okay.
In fact, I think the town of Woodstock, the village of Woodstock in the downtown area functions as an HOA.
They, they do have, there are separate regulations, the village of Woodstock and the town of Woodstock are, do have independent short term ren- rental regulations.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I, I don't.
I got a big folder.
And with HOs, HOAs, I don't imagine there would be any conflict from them about what we're doing.
Like, maybe fifteen, fifteen properties at this point, so, like.
And, and they wouldn't disagree with the concept.
I doubt it.
Yeah.
They would, they would think themselves immune to it.
Yeah.
Well, that's true, too.
Okay, do we wanna try and come up with a definition of adverse effects or an adverse impact on the occupant? That I, I.
So that's.
Wanted to, but we, we've, we've all agreed we wanted to, but.
We, we kinda punted it to the town attorney, right?
Yeah, he, he's been dealing with other stuff, so.
But yeah, but that's why we didn't do it, I mean, we, we thought we'd get an expert to do it.
I can try and get it back to him in time.
Maybe just that definition?
I can, I can maybe try to. Push him to get this done.
I tried, I tried to write something, but I don't.
Really, I mean, it's such a simple thing, but it's really hard.
I know, I don't know what I'm.
You end up with so many words, it doesn't make sense anymore.
Well, I'll tell you what I wrote, and I, and I, I'm not presenting this as, as a. Solution, but I said actions are conditions that add to our result than undesirable. Aspects of the community.
But then, like, like, well, then what does undesirable mean? Like, what, what, what does that mean to you versus means to me? Like, it's, it, it becomes, it's complicated. For such a simple term, it's complicated, so, all right, I will, I will, I'll try to get it to Kevin tomorrow. Try and ask him to really, to see if he can, tell, tell him why, be like, can you just?
Can, can you get the whole thing done by eleventh, or i- if not, we need this answer.
Or, because I wanna get it posted again to, get, like, get copied out to everybody, like, if you can't, like, get copied out to everybody. And post it again, so people have a chance to, to see it, so.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, double checking the. Statutory references, because we did find some that were wrong, and the ones that were wrong, I copied from other towns, so. That's a problem, but not for us. Uh, so, yeah, just checking those references and seeing if anything else that jumps out, and, but I think largely it was, was okay.
Yeah, yeah, and he has, has had experience with this one, so.
Although we're actually head of killing at this point, so.
Hey, we're doing great.
Yeah.
Um, Sherman, do you mind reading that again, your definition of an adverse effect?
That's good. I said actions are conditions that add to a result then. Undesirable, which is a word.
Undesirable.
I, I didn't, I didn't, I couldn't finish.
Condition, like, condition or, or, or situation, I think it's.
Undesirable condition or situation.
Right, okay. Situations, it's. Ask me what page, I would be my.
Yeah.
Circumstances. Okay. All right.
Oh, where's it?
Okay, anything else on this topic? Good discussion. Thank you for all, all of your input. Um.
So I don't want to prolong this any longer, but.
That's okay.
Anybody have any, any any comments, questions, suggestions on the permit?
I think it looks pretty good.
So we, and I do, I do. The, I think we're talking about the fees, and if they're talking about Rowland City. Wasn't fair, because there are, there are a lot of, there's a lot of comments about Rowland City in there, which I thought that was ironic, but um. We are, we, I am looking, and I do have a vendor kind of picked out to help us with. Purely identifying. Rental, rental properties in the town. They would, they would go through and visit once a week. Scrub the thirty something websites for short term rentals. And they give you a report that says, here's how many there are, here's how many bedrooms they have listed, all the, all the details on it. Uh, and it's about three thousand dollars a year. For that service. The first one I talked to was twenty seven thousand dollars a year.
It's a little different.
Much better. Their cost would be one hundred percent covered. By the fees in the ordinance, so there is a zero cost to the taxpayer. In at large for the regulation that goes into this ordinance. And that was, that was important for me to figure out that ratio of. Of of balancing that, to make sure that we weren't, the tax rate weren't having to pay to regulate something that they have nothing they have.
How are you so certain of that?
Very well.
That it would be paid for?
Well, that's why I played around the numbers a little bit, but. At thirty, we're paying about three thousand dollars a year. So the eighteen and 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 we we talked about, we want to change the fees, but at at. When I found the eighteen, it was fifty five bedrooms. And I I haven't even gone to the other twelve yet to figure how many there are, but fifty five bedrooms, so that's about five thousand dollars in in fees. That we would be getting in. That would, that would cover. The vendor, plus I imagine there should be some other things, or like probably some site visits to check things, things like that, that would cover. Any other costs that we have that goes part, goes to part of them.
That that is assuming that the fees are gonna come in.
Right, well, if, but that's where we hire this vendor. And, right, we're gonna assume that if half of them pay, we're gonna be really close.
Okay.
So this vendor gives us that information where we can then go, and then then we can start to go to the person and say. Here's the ordinance, you have X number of days to bring yourself in line. Or there's penalty. I I anytime I go talk to someone, and I've gone out to a lot of houses, talk to people about. Stormwater, I've I made, settled with stormwater ordinance lately, that's been interesting. But I told, I said, listen, I am much more interested in helping make sure we are in line upfront. Than having to do the enforcement. We will do that if we have to, but nobody likes that part of it, including me. So I would much rather have you be in line with what we want to do than having to say. Here's a fine, and oh, by the way, you still need to be in line with what you're doing. So there, like, I I made it very clear, like, I don't. We put enforcement in there as the stick, but. Let's, let, it's much better to have the conversation upfront and be like, let's get you in line, so that we're all on the same page, rather than.
And that's what the vendor would do.
Right.
Wha- what are the storm out water issues that come?
Uh, we've had some people that have called and says, hey, I don't, we have an ordinance about clearing trees, playing brush, and I'm like, yeah, well, my neighbor is doing this, okay. So I've gone out and and.
This is in the buffer?
Yeah, oh, yeah, like, like. Green trees, and we went out to paint measure, but they were, they were small trees, so it would, I'm glad they called. The person I talked to was glad that I I I called and said, hey, here's why I'm calling, can I come out and talk to you? They're like, absolutely, told me what they're doing. All good, so. Um.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's been, they've been all positive interactions, which has been, which has been very good. But, you know, people call and they question, then sometimes I ask them to come here, and sometimes I go out and and see them, but. If I go out, then there there's there's, I don't know, so, uh, but that, but the the getting, getting back to that is. Is we, we know there's gonna be a cost to regulate this, is with with in order to the size, like, and and the complexity of this, there's gonna be some. Other things that come out, the biggest one being just making sure everybody's playing on by the same rules, because if. Neighbor A is doing all the things they're supposed to be doing and renting, and they're fine, neighbor B is just renting and not paying for it. That's gonna make neighbor A a little resentful. Well, then why do I need to do it? Well, we're gonna make sure everybody's doing it, so. We want to identify those, that's what that vendor's for, because it's too hard to do it otherwise.
And is that vendor also for to counter any arguments like, but you're, why are you expanding? Local government, aren't you just making?
The vendor.
We're contracting everything out.
We are contracted the vendor to provide us a very specific information set. That's all they're doing. They aren't telling us anything other than this is the property. This is, like, we're getting the details about the rental, but. Really not, not anything that's gonna, they're 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 not making any judgments, they're just providing this information that we need to make our decision. Then what we do from there is based upon the rules that we decide on.
Right, right, yeah. Because that's an argument we often hear.
Sure, and when, you know, I look at the fee to be, to be enough to cover the expenses, but not to be. Crazy, so. Uh, did you see the fees in there, Jim? What we're talking about, the fees for this, so a hundred dollars plus a hundred dollars a bedroom. So a four bedroom house is five hundred dollars a year. There is one house that I found that was renting for eighteen hundred dollars a night in town. So. You look at these, like, it's probably not an unreasonable charge, because they're making that in one day, so.
That's a good.
I found out a lot of stuff.
And I mean, that could be part of the presentation too. Yeah, okay. Okay, so, um. I'll get, I'll get some FAQs together and. If you want me to share them around.
Hey first, because I have a little question, pick them up.
Yeah. I'll share them if you if you guys want. Um. So with the the um, we've, the next thing on the agenda is to review the summary. Of the draft. Of subdivision ordinance. We made so many changes, we thought we needed a summary of 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 what was changed. Just so we could explain it and then also put it in official postings. You know, this is what has changed. Um, we just got a copy of that before the meeting, so I would suggest that we look at this. Uh, it's called the list of changes from the subdivision regulations. And maybe take it up on the eleventh, um, depending on how many people are here, or i- i- it can certainly wait. There's, there's no rush on the subdivision, but I would like people to spend some.
I'm gonna send to Kevin. A copy of the original ordinance, a copy of the redline version with all the changes shown in there. A clean version and this.
Okay, so so he'll review it too.
Fully edit, fully with all the edits, one with all the edits completely in there, no changes, and this.
And probably wait to do that until we get the um, you know, the short term rentals information back from them.
I want that for, yeah, that first, yeah, yeah.
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 So, yeah, if 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 you want this just to read for your personal reference, or if you want to have some say, um, on what Bill sends.
Hey, hey, Bill.
We've got some time.
This, however, is not. A legal document, it's a summary of.
Oh, yeah, no, just go to Kevin, just be like, here's what we did.
Yeah, but it's not exhaustive. It.
Well, that's, that's also why I want to send him the three versions.
Okay.
If you want to do, because I know, like.
Well, I mean, yeah, uh, what you have on here is anything that was of substance.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
But I did not, every time we said select board, I didn't necessarily.
Well, if if, yeah, and he, if he wants to add all of those things.
Why, like, in the beginning, I put the revisions, that's one thing I put in there, is like, changed select board, it's like, select board, like.
Yep.
But thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
I look forward to uh, taking a look at it. Okay, so so we'll, that's what we'll do for the subdivision tonight. Um, the river corridor corridor ordinance. Um, we will put that pretty much on hold. I'll, I'll keep. I I've got the the list from Marsha. Of of the landowners and their addresses, so we're ready to go, but let's just wait until after the short term rentals and. See how that plays out.
Different group people bad of us.
It'll be, it could be a different group, but let's not just be constantly barraged here. Um, so maybe like this fall, we'll do some site visits and 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 a public meeting or two on that. Um. Let's see, um, and for announcements, um, there is a municipal election on May twenty third. Uh, there is a select board seat on that. I forget what else. Uh, the, oh, the question about the the fires.
Fire station?
Fire station.
Select board. Two listers, the link tax collector, and cemetery commissioner.
Ooh, yeah.
Race.
So right now, it's the the question that will go on the ballot for the safety building.
Yeah.
The fire police building is. That the town will not exceed five point five million for that structure. The the original amount was four.
Four, just over four.
Or two or something like that.
The the architect had figured. He looked at other projects that had recently been completed, looked at their cost per square foot. And said, well, we're gonna, we're gonna get, we're gonna put it up here, because we think that's where the, where the project's gonna come in, and it came in like. Way out.
Yeah. It it it's, it's weird that it has to be worded that way, and and because people might think, okay, geez. You want four point two and you want five point five, you know.
We we were listening to the discussion the other night.
Yeah.
But, you know, a lot of it was, it's, the the project's already approved at that cost. They're looking for approval to change the cost, not not approval on the project, so.
Yeah, hopefully that'll be clear to voters.
So, we're gonna, we're gonna have a meeting, so ballots are getting mailed out to everybody, but we're still doing a pre, we're doing a pre vote meeting the night before at the school, so.
Yeah. Those are not usually too well attended, but. It didn't, the election probably won't be. But, yeah, it it's just, it's just weird how it has to play out like that, and that.
Heard a lot of, a lot of wrangling the other night about the wording on that, so.
Yeah, I know, a- and it includes a five percent contingency, which seems kind of modest, but in these days.
Five percent of five and a half million dollars.
Yeah, yeah, it adds up.
Nice sum.
Okay. Um.
And we are having an open house at the McKinley Fire Station on.
April twenty ninth.
Saturday, right? No, next week, a week from Saturday.
Wh- what were the hours?
Uh, ten to noon, just, it's just short, but, uh, so people, people are wondering. Some of the reasons why we're asking for it, there's a picture of the police office up there, what what it looks like, and then just coming to see. The the facility as it exists now, so. Yeah.
That that's in McKinley Avenue.
Yes. Yes.
Too bad they can't be like in both locations, it's like, okay, here's the closet.
Well, May thirteenth is the state, there's a statewide open house for fire departments, so we're participating in that also, and that is in Centerville.
Yeah.
So that's, that's a longer, a longer one, there's flyers out here and stuff for that, but that's a statewide. Uh.
And and I also mean having people look at the.
Wait, because. There's access requirements for the office, so they're trying to figure out how they do that, so, yeah. It's, it's tight.
Is Rooster in there too?
Uh, occasionally, he was, it's a later night, he's out in the car, so.
Any other news anyone wants to share? Okay, uh, the minutes of March thirtieth. Norm's not here, but he gave us, he gave us a couple of notes. I only remember one of them.
Would you approve the minutes of, uh, March thirtieth?
Your second?
I was not here, so I don't think I should second.
Second.
Andy, you're seconding them?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Norm pointed out that. It it, I don't think we need to add, it was, it's about the subdivision ordinance and. Uh, and number three, discuss creating an overview of the important changes and. He wanted, he wanted Dana mentioned there, but I don't think it's.
His recollection with Dana, Dana preparing the overview. And that old business number two, should rental properties be changed to short term rental properties?
What line is that?
Old business, uh. Old business review the ordinance, number two. We divided by all. Specify the short, identifying short term rental properties.
And then there's being talked. Oh, yeah, let's do that. Number two, um. Instead of just all the rental properties in town, all the short term rental properties.
Even though the topic at the top at old business says short term rental properties. It's, you don't think it's clear that they're talking about rental properties that are short term?
Just so there's no confusion. Anything else that anyone sees in here?
Um. I know that I made the suggestion that we do a one pager. I don't know that I need to be mentioned. But that's entirely up to you, Bill. I wasn't offended that my name wasn't there.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Um, will the person who made the motion?
Yep, I'll amend my motion to, um. Be to accept the minutes as um, correct or as amended.
And it's just the one change we're making, right?
Yeah, but I don't know that we need. Like that, but. Approved minutes as amended.
Second.
So that's, I think, Sherman's, but. Oh, you did, you did second, okay. Yeah, that's right, Andy, yep.
Okay, I'm in favor of approving the minutes as amended. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
And I sustain, I sustain.
And no, I don't think Jim made that, made the last meeting. You, you weren't here. Yeah, you're not listed yet. So, okay. Just that one. Change, and anything else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Or adjourned.
Second it.
I'll second it.
We are adjourned, thank you, thank you for. Your work tonight.